I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We want to welcome all of you in attendance this evening, as well as those that might be watching on cable, Channel 7, to this evening's City Council meeting. We will stick with the council agenda as printed. The next item is the consent. I've been asked to pull Item 3G. Item 3G, are there other items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Seeing none, I will accept the motion for the approval of the consent agenda except Item G.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item G. Councilman Solon.
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted to make sure that we've got a grant to install new lights at Pink Hill Park and Keystone Park, and I just wanted to put my plug in that we install energy efficient lights. They will last seven years longer than the standard lights, and actually in two years you will save on your electric bill by 70 percent. So, since this is an energy efficient grant, I want to make sure we were going to be energy efficient and install energy efficient lighting.
Okay, other comments? I will accept the motion for the approval.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
For discussion, let's get a roll call.
Councilman Lauer.
Aye.
Councilman Reed.
Aye.
Councilman Shaver.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Solon.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is introduction and reading of Bill 4064.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4064, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or city administrator of the city of Blue Springs to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Move that we approve on the first reading, proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4064, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or city administrator of the city of Blue Springs to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Reed.
Aye.
Councilman Shaver.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Solon.
Aye.
Councilman Lauer.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4247.
Next, we have a public hearing on vacation of Indigo Hills, PUD, First Platte, Lot 11.
Your Honor, for this particular public hearing, which is VAC-5-09-2166, the city would like to offer one exhibit, which includes a city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, site location map, affidavit of publication as advertised and examiner, May 23, 2009, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letters sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing. These are all the exhibits we have to offer on this particular public hearing.
Okay, Ms. Allen, would you like to present staff report on it?
Certainly. Thank you, Your Honor and members of the council. Given before this evening is a request to vacate a portion of a utility easement in the Indigo Hills First Platte subdivision, and specifically Lot 11, where the address is 4908 Southwest Marguerite Street. It's currently owned by Metcalf Bank, and they're the applicant as well. Again, requesting to vacate approximately eight-foot by 34-foot area within the platted utility easement, which would allow the encroachment of a single-family residential deck. You can see on the map there the location of the single-family residential lot. Again, it's just south and west of US Highway 40 in the Indigo Hills First Platte subdivision. The request for this vacation was heard by the Planning Commission at their June 8th meeting last week. They do recommend approval with three conditions, and that was recommended unanimously in a vote of nine to zero. The three conditions are fairly standard. The only different condition in there is that a revised plot plan related to the building permit be submitted showing the correct location of the deck and setbacks pending your consideration here this evening. With that, I'll certainly be open for any questions, or otherwise I believe the applicant is here as well.
Questions, Ms. Allen. Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward, be somewhere in the end, make a presentation?
Richard Kraus, K-R-A-U-S. I'm with Metcalf Bank, and my address is 4301 Southwest 14, Blue Springs.
Kyle Jones, 1516 Southwest Trow Ridge Drive, Blue Springs, 64015.
Okay, welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. A little history on this house. The bank foreclosed on this property February of '08. It was in the stage of probably sheet rock, and we tried to sell it as is, unsuccessful. So, after about three months, we hired Marker Construction to go ahead and complete the house. They did so. We now have a contract on it, and we did make a little mistake and had the deck out too far on this thing, and are asking the council to vacate this easement so we may sell the house. So, I also want to thank Scott and Jim for helping us in getting through this process and getting us right here now, so, thank you.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, any questions?
There's any questions if anyone has any.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In opposition to? In opposition to? Seeing none, we close this public hearing. Now, I will accept an introduction and reading of Bill 4065.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4065, an ordinance vacating a portion of a utility easement on Lot 11, Indigo Hills, PUD, First Platte, the subdivision of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading, proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Shaver?
Just a quick question. I guess, just to confirm, reading the materials that are in the handout, I'm assuming that all the utilities have given their approval for this.
That's correct, Your Honor, and Councilman Shaver. AT&amp;T was the one that the applicant had the greatest amount of difficulty in time getting some approvals because they do have some existing utilities in that area. But, yeah, they have all submitted letters stating that they do not have any opposition to this.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4065, an ordinance vacating a portion of a utility easement on Lot 11, Indigo Hills, PUD, First Platte, the subdivision in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Shaver.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Solon.
Aye.
Councilman Lauer.
Aye.
Councilman Reed.
Aye.
Carried, given ordinance Number 4248.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on a capital improvement program for FY 2009 and '10 through 2014, 2015.
Your Honor, for this particular public hearing, the city would like to offer one exhibit, which includes a city council information form with staff report from Scott Allen, Director of Community Development, staff report, affidavit of publication from examiner as dated on May 30, 2009, and draft capital improvement program document as submitted. These are all the exhibits we'd like to offer on behalf of this particular public hearing.
Thank you. We'll have a presentation about the Assistant City Administrator, Todd Pelton.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate this opportunity to present the capital improvements program for this year. I've got a short PowerPoint presentation. I think there have copies been made available to you, if you want to take a look at that. Just real quickly, I'd like to begin by recognizing some people that offered some assistance for this year's process. The three council district representatives, Councilman Sheila Solon from the 3rd District, Ken Edmondson from District 2, and then also Jeannie Lauer from District 1. We appreciate your input into the rating and prioritization process this year. We also had two members from the Planning Commission this year, James May and also Michael Parker.
Michael Parker.
And then also one park and rec representative, Jack Dilliland, I think. Did I get that right? Okay, thank you. The purpose of tonight's presentation is threefold. As you know by the city charter, the city administrator is required to prepare and submit a CIP of not less than five years to the mayor and city council for your review. The document in front of you meets that requirement. We'd also like to thank staff from Community Development, Jim Holly, Scott Allen, Christine Cage, Director of Finance, also provide a lot of input, a lot of time and effort has went into the document you see before you. Tonight's public hearing allows for public comment to this draft CIP, and also is an opportunity for our citizens to comment on the capital priorities that the city will bring forward in the next six years. And the third option tonight is consideration of an ordinance later adopting the CIP for 2010 through 2015. Just to give you a little bit of context, the projects that you see tonight are defined up on the slide. A capital improvement project, the criteria that allows it to become part of this process is defined as any acquisition of land, construction of public facilities, major repairs to public facilities, or purchase of major equipment of $50,000 or more with a useful life of five years. So, it has to meet those two requirements to become part of this process. Any other capital requests would come through the operating budgets, which you'll adopt later this summer, and those individual requests will come through each departmental budget. So, again, 50,000 or more with a useful life of five years. I touched on it a little bit before, a quick overview of the CIP review process. Again, a CIP review committee was formed. Their goal with the idea to take established evaluation criteria, match those up against the submitted projects, and then provide a prioritized list. That list went to the Planning Commission. They met on Monday, June 8, and reviewed that document. The role of the Planning Commission in that review is to look at each project and see that it conforms with the comprehensive plan. Those comments and input from the Planning Commission were forwarded in a memo and commented by the city administrator, which leads us to tonight's public hearing and adoption of the draft CIP. This slide shows a high-level overview of seven service areas. As the title suggests, these are the funded FY 2009 through 2010 service areas for a total of $50 million for '09, '10. These seven categories, I'm going to quickly go through some highlights within each of those categories, but how these projects are funded, there's varying sources, but the main categories that fund these projects are the general fund, or the capital improvements fund is what we call them, community development block grants, which are funded by the federal government. This year is obviously very unique in that we had another funding source which we were eligible for, which is the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, or federal stimulus dollars, which fund a substantial portion of this CIP. We also have dollars appropriated from the voter-approved bond issue, which passed in August of 2008. We also received funding from MODOT, and then also to round that out, the sewer and water fund, which is funded through user fees, funds a major component of the CIP. So, with that, I'd like to, again, this is not a comprehensive list, but there are some major projects within each of these categories, just to highlight. As you know, when the city went over 50,000 in population, we became eligible for the CDBG federal grant program. Those dollars are funded 125,000 within the CIP, but at council direction, we've put 125,000 into the operating budget side, which will fund the minor home repair program, and those dollars will be shown within the community development budget. So, the 125,000 we've got programmed are for various sidewalks through downtown, and you might remember our previous presentation on that. The next project is something that we're all really excited about to be able to fund this year, is the Pink Hill Park recycling facility. If funded, this will be the first recycling center within the Blue Springs city limits. This project is for $92,000. It will be located at Pink Hill Park, just north of the existing maintenance building there. It'll be 16,000 square foot facility, and again, this is currently funded through the federal recovery energy block grant program, which we just discussed. But, just to let you know, staff will be working two tracks. We will also be pursuing Mark funding if this should not come to pass, and kind of covering both of our bases on that. But, we're very excited about this. This has been a long-term recommendation from the Solid Waste Committee, and something that's come out in our citizen survey several times. Three projects listed here, and they're the park system, Ward Park Walking Trail. This is for 150,000, again, from the federal stimulus act. This will replace about a mile worth of walking trail at Ward Park. This is located at 40 Highway and Quarry Road. The next two projects deal with ball field light replacement, the Councilman Solon just mentioned. Again, very excited about this and the long-term operational cost savings this will provide. Just to give you a context, the ball field lights at Pink Hill Park are over 35 years old, and the ball field lights at Keystone Park are over 28 years old. So, again, a real need, and obviously a safety concern, as those wooden poles are going to sometimes fall over, but hopefully that will not happen. Moving on to our street, our street program, a lot of dollars tied up in this program. Obviously, the council over the last two years has made a very strong commitment to the street overlay program. For the following year, we'll have 2.5 million programmed, again, over $17 million over the six-year program. Our goal each year is to fund over 15 miles of street overlay throughout the city, and those dollars are equally divided among the three council districts. So, we will continue to move forward with that project. The second one, Moreland School Road Extension, this was a part of the voter-approved bond issue in August of 2008. There's $1.5 million program for next year. Currently, right-of-way acquisition is going on, and construction of that project will begin in 2010. The first phase of the Woods Chapel Road project is scheduled, actually, the right-of-way acquisition is scheduled for this year. The million dollars that you see there is programmed for the '09, '10 year, followed up by 6.6 million in 2010, oh, 2011. Again, this is the improvements from I-70 to Valley View Place. And the last project they're rounding out is $8 million for Highway 7 and Colburn Road. Of that number, $3 million is included in the bond issue. We've also received 2.8 million in MODOT grants, and then also, the city's also previously appropriated 2.2 million from the city's capital improvement fund. Construction is scheduled for 2010 for that project, and we're currently in right-of-way acquisition, and also working with Lake Lotawanna on that intersection. Just real quickly, to get to the glamorous stuff, the sewer utility. This project, just to point out, the Tire Road Sanitary Sewer Extension, this will extend the sewer system from the south side of Coronado Drive, which is east of the Haldex Company, continuing north beneath I-70 from northeast 20th Street to Tire Road. This will open up that area for development, and the property owner is also contractually required to contribute $96,000 to this project. But, this was an agreement the city entered into several years ago to extend sewers to this property, so that will be included. The Snibar wastewater treatment plant, as you know, is located in Green Valley. The voter-approved bond issue also allowed the city to access low-interest financing through the state of Missouri. With the voter approval of this issue, the city is now projected to save an estimated $12 million in financing costs because of that vote. Our access to that financing capital was under the leadership of Oliver DeGrae, and his staff should be complimented for working on this project for several years. This is obviously a major expansion and will allow for future growth for the next 20 years. There is a major share of this, $33 million will be contributed from the city of Green Valley, which equates to about $14 million of this number will be reimbursed from the city of Green Valley. So, that gives you some of the highlights of the funded CIP, but obviously, we have some challenges going forward. We wanted to talk a little bit about these, what we're calling CIP challenges going forward, and some of these comments came out with the Planning Commission comments, and we wanted to pause and maybe try and address some of these issues. Probably the number-one thing that staff is internally planning for is our public safety communications needs. As you'll see, there are four projects listed within the unfunded CIP, PS01 through PS04, totaling over $10 million in requests. This is a critical need for the city. We've got over $6 million in public safety radios that need to be replaced. We have an FCC mandate of 2013 for the city to move all of our radios to this digital frequency band. Currently, internally, staff is looking at several, evaluating all the methods that we can come up with, including possible grant funding. We have not been successful in locating any pots of money for that currently, but Eric, along with the mayor and the finance staff, were developing some possible options that we'd like to bring forward to you in the near future. But, again, it's a big number, something that we're going to have to buckle down and try and fund within the next few years. The second bullet there, parks maintenance. Our recent citizen survey pointed out that this was one of the top issues that citizens were concerned with. We saw a 4% decrease in this category from last year's citizen survey. But, as you know, as our park system ages, we need to keep up with that. With a strong commitment to street maintenance, there's very few dollars left in the general fund that can go towards the parks maintenance, so it's something that we're definitely keeping our eye on. One of the main issues that we have within the parks maintenance budgets is the pool deferred maintenance. As you know, we've talked extensively about the concerns that staff and also the school district have with that facility. As you know, the roof on that facility is reaching its, well, it's past its useful life, and it's something that I think we'll have before you sooner than later, probably this year. We're going to need to address that issue. The roof, just the roof alone is about $450,000, just to replace that roof, so, something to keep on, to take a look at. Last two issues, the update of the comprehensive plan. Last year, staff brought this back forward for your review. I think it was consensus of the council to wait on that project until after the 2010 census. I know the mayor and city administrator have had extensive conversations about the process going forward, and I think they will be bringing forward some recommendations as to how we can, in the interim, bite off certain aspects of the comprehensive plan without a full-blown update. So, I think those recommendations will be coming forward pretty soon. And then the last one, the facilities, I just called it facilities master planning. There's several projects listed within this category, but as you know, this building, the public safety building is at capacity, city hall's at capacity. We've got, Central Garage was a project we delayed because of the current economic environment. We've got a lot of space needs throughout the organization that you see show up with some high dollars on the unfunded list. As you know, we will continue to make this a priority and bring these forwards, and we have opportunities to address it. So, in conclusion, some of the big numbers, the summary, you have a total funded '09, ' '10 CIP of 50.5 million, a total six-year CIP of 93 million. As you can see, the total unfunded projects total almost 97 million, without any identified funding source at this time. The CIP also includes a five-year program for the street maintenance program at your direction, it's 17 million, again, 2.5 million for the next few years, with an accelerator, I believe, in '13 to 3.5 million, to get to that $17 million. So, in conclusion, you can see that 44.3 million of the '09, '10 funded CIP is attributable to the voter-approved August 2008 bond issue. So, we appreciate the voters instilling that confidence in us, and we hope to move those projects forward in the next few years. So, with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bellam. Any questions, Ms. Bellam?
Your Honor, I had a couple of questions and a few comments. My first comment is, two years ago, we increased our budget from street maintenance from 1.5 million to 2.5 million. And I know the numbers weren't great in the citizen survey as far as citizen satisfaction, but I think those will go up as we continue to address the problem. I'm glad we haven't reduced that in our capital improvements. We've kept it at 2.5 million. I know that's been tougher for staff, so I'm pleased to see that. It's something that's very important to our citizens, and actually, in our citizen survey, it was the number-one priority. Recycling Center, I just, again, 93,000 for recycling center came in high on our citizen survey. Glad we're addressing that. One thing that I had mentioned in previous city council meetings, and it came up during the mayor's public safety task force, was the need for high-powered rifles in our police cars instead of shotguns, and also an increased number of tasers that we need for our police department. And I guess I had a question from Chief McCoy to kind of address that. I know it's not in the capital improvements budget, but I believe that it's going to be in our budget when it comes before us for approval.
Thank you.
Chief McCoy, go ahead.
Please. Thank you, Mayor. Those in addition, the rifles are, I request those in addition to the shotguns, to give the officers an additional tool that they can use in certain situations. For example, in a school shooting or a type like that, they do need those directly. So, we have in this current budget, a request for, not in the CIP, but in the general fund budget, a request for 24 rifles, and a request for seven tasers to supplement ours and be able to deliver the service that we need to do.
And I just want to offer an additional comment, that we need to provide the best equipment for our police officers, so I would encourage Chief McCoy that if it turns out that you need additional equipment, that that's something that I know the city council will be very supportive of. We want to help our officers protect the public, so, thank you for that.
Thank you.
May I ask a quick question?
Councilwoman Reacher.
How many rifles do we own currently?
Currently, we, mostly our rifles are only issued to our staffing. We have 14 in the current that we have.
So, that would bring the total up to, how many were there?
Forty-four and 42.
We'd have quite a day if we ever needed all those.
Thirty-eight.
He's in charge of public safety, not mayor.
That's why we have Kristin.
That's why Christine's there, right.
Any other questions? Anyway, we want to thank you for the presentation and for the things that we're doing, and certainly, I think we try to respond to the needs of the community. We think we've done a pretty good job of it, as indicated in the last citizen survey. And before I came to the meeting tonight, I was briefly watching the news while I was getting dressed, and he said something about the stimulus package money, had something in there about tunnels for turtles. I think I could probably better use that for the CIP budget than for turtles. So, anyway, just shows you kind of some of the waste that you have on the federal level that I wish I could get my hands on some of those dollars, because we could put it to good use right here in Blue Springs. I don't mind being on the national news saying that we did some good stuff. Councilman Edmondson.
Since I said it on that committee and stuff, I would like to thank staff for all the diligence-
to good use right here in Blue Springs. I don't mind being on the national news saying that we did some good stuff. Councilman Metzger?
Since I said it on that committee and stuff, I would like to thank staff for all the diligence they did on this and all the effort they put together on that. The city would not be in a position, or is now, if it wasn't for the efficiency of the staff we have, and we're real blessed to have that.
I think we would all echo those comments. Councilman Shaver?
Your Honor, a comment, not on the budget dollars, but in the verbiage that's associated with the capital improvement plan. I note on page nine, where it talks about updating the 2003 comprehensive plan, I suspect that's been carried over from previous years. It does not mention the Missouri Innovative Park, and I think that needs to be changed. We've really kind of come full circle. It comments on the original plan being envisioned, an employment center along the Adams-Durie Parkway. It has changed to retail, and now we're coming back to an employment center with the Missouri Innovative Park.
Good thoughts and comments. You're absolutely right. Any other comments? Councilman Lauer?
Yes, I want to add on to what Councilman Edmondson said. It does take a lot of work from staff to be able to prioritize, to help prioritize these and to make the monies go as far as they possibly can. And I think, first of all, thanks to the citizens as well for providing some funds for our upcoming CIP projects for this year. It's a great benefit to be able to do some of these things based on the additional funding that we have. And since this was my first time to go through the process, I appreciated that, but I think it also is a great education opportunity to see that it takes a lot of balancing among the city staff to be able to look at everything that the needs represent and the things they can do to hold things off and spend the money where it needs to be. So I wanted to show my appreciation to Eric and the staff for being able to do that even in the times we've got now, being able to manage that. So thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing now, we will now open the public hearing up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in support of, in support of, the CIP? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition to, opposition to? Seeing none. Close this public hearing, and I will entertain an introduction and reading of Bill 4066.
Your Honor, I'll introduce it. First reading of Bill Number 4066, an ordinance adopting the city of Blue Springs Capital Improvements Program for fiscal years 2009 and '10 through 2014 and '15.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading. Proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment, Your Honor.
Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, thank you. Just a brief comment, because I do want to point out something and just bring it to your attention. I'm certain it was already alluded to. In this proposed CIP, we are proposing that we use energy efficiency grant funds to fund projects identified and listed, the recycling center and the two Ballfield projects. If we, as I've learned over the years, you don't cash the check until you actually receive it. So right now, we are still going through the due diligence process. Mr. Allen is working in conjunction with the federal government and is also working, also in tandem with the Mid-America Regional Council on a regional energy efficiency strategy. So there's some i's to dot and some t's to cross yet, and so we'll anticipate that we're going to receive the funding for it, but we won't cash the check until we actually receive it. I do want to point out that if we receive those funds, that will free up approximately $368,000 of funds previously programmed and allocated for those projects. That can either be returned to fund balance and can be utilized at some additional point in time in the future, or can be programmed for other projects. Of course, we have a long list of unfunded projects, and the one project that was mentioned tonight in our presentation was consideration of deferred maintenance on our swimming pool, specifically including roof replacement. We believe that's a critical project. We did not allocate that in this budget. We've not programmed funds because we think that's a decision for the city council to consider when and how we would go about that. But as you move forward with this budget, whether you consider it tonight, or we would take this offline and go to a work session and have additional conversations, or I would receive direction from you to propose that in my budget submittal that I give to you on August the 1st, that is a very immediate need that we're going to have to address, we believe, in 2010. And I wanted to make you aware that there are funds available in this CIP should you choose to move forward with funding that particular project. And appreciate the time to address that, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I think what you just gave us is good food for thought. Certainly, if those dollars are freed up and we have the opportunity, we need to take a very serious look at those items. Councilman Shaver?
Yes, I would certainly be supportive of using these dollars for the pool roof if that, they become available. That is certainly a very serious need. And serving on the park commission, I have personally looked at that roof, and it needs help.
Thank you, Councilman Shaver. Anyone else?
Your Honor, I might also point out, we've had ongoing discussions with the school district on that particular project because the school district also contributes to approximately 50% of any improvements that are made to that facility. So we appreciate their ongoing dialogue. They're aware of the need. Obviously, we'd like to be talking about a different long-term facility at this point in time, but that's just not what we have to deal with at the moment.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4066, an ordinance adopting the city of Blue Springs Capital Improvements Program for fiscal years 2009 through '10 through 2014 and '15.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solan?
Aye.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Carry, give an ordinance number 4249.
Next, we have a presentation of the telecommunication task force. Since being mayor, I've had the honor and privilege of appointing a number of task force. And so tonight is your turn, Councilman Shaver. The floor is yours.
I'm going to drop these a bit after following Todd. Your Honor and fellow council members, I appreciate the opportunity to give you an overview of the telecommunication task force and the opportunity to have chaired that. The task force has two objectives. One was to evaluate the future technology and need for towers in Blue Springs in the future, and two was to review and update our ordinances. We had a committee of 10 people, including two council members, Councilman Edmondson and Solan, Chris Henning, Pam Arborelli, Jim Wallace, Roberta Miller, Deanna McLean, and Bill Reddy, and James Berry. We were very fortunate in having people that had a wide background, which always helps. And as well as, we had great support from staff, Jim Holly, mainly who was our secretary and provided information as we needed it. We had eight meetings, generally at two-week intervals. During this time, we met with three vendors, as well as with the city of Lee Summit and Jackson County. We reviewed ordinances from all of the cities within the metro area that are listed here, as well as local counties, and then ordinances from cities, counties, generally on the east and west coast of the U.S. So quite a diverse background. Here is a map that shows where we have cell towers in the city. Today, we have three standalone cell towers, one being behind the restaurant, Bob Evans, one being on 40 Highway and Woods Chapel, and then the new one at Lake Remembrance. In addition to that, all three of our water towers have antennas on them. There are three towers that are not in the city limits that are adjacent to our city limits. So that is the total where we are today. Key findings. Talking to selective service consultants, they feel we're not likely to need more than two to three new towers in Blue Springs, looking forward, with an average height of between 100 and 150 feet. Talking to T-Mobile, they say, you know, their challenge now is getting coverage inside buildings. Their first step was to get coverage over the general area. Now that people are using cell phones as their primary means of communication, it starts becoming an issue, particularly in buildings that have a lot of steel in them. One of the other things we learned from them is that monopole towers can be stealthed by enclosing the antennas, and I'll show you some pictures of that in a little bit. As you might expect, shorter towers typically reduce coverage and the opportunity for co-location. That's your trade-off in height. Verizon, again, a bit of good news, which surprised me, they feel their technology growth will reduce their need for more towers in the future. Now, recognize that Verizon was the one who just built the latest tower, so they're coming from having just added one tower. But anyway, they were quite enthused of their technology growth being able to compensate for their increased usage. Pros and cons of stealth towers. Pros, the obvious is, of course, appearance, aesthetics. They're unique designs, which can be interesting. They may be multi-use, for example, like the water towers are church steeple. The cons are, often, they reduce opportunities for co-location, which means more towers, and they are design-specific for location. And I'll show you some examples. This is a typical monopole cell tower. This is a monopole that has the enclosed antennas, either just a free tower with the antennas enclosed, or another example here showing it with a flag on it to make it look like a flagpole. Another example, again, the monopole enclosed to look like a cross if it's at a church. Again, one of the things we learned, stealth, what makes sense for stealth depends on where it's located. A cross can make sense beside of a church. It makes no sense in front of City Hall, for example. Here's a very elaborate stealth, is with a pine tree, which, again, is a beautiful job of steelping, would look great in a forest, would look kind of odd if it was standing out all by itself at 150 feet tall. A new version, alternative that I had not seen before, this is using the lights for a ballpark with antennas on them, which is an interesting stealth design. That really is objective, covers objective one. Objective two was to review our ordinances and update them. The good news is our ordinances are really in pretty darn good shape. So it's a matter of tweaking them and updating them to current technology. And I'll go through these and I'll try to kind of paraphrase them. One, the first, when we added in the purpose of it, that telecommunication towers shall, to the extent possible, accommodate emergency service antennas and not interfere with existing emergency service, i.e. with our new radios coming in, we want to be able to use them on our cell towers. Two, to accommodate stealth design, we added, we had, in current ordinance says there will be no signs or commercial advertising, flags, da-da-da, on the antennas. Well, if you, for example, the stealth with a flag on it, our current ordinance, we couldn't do that. So this says excluding elements that are part of a stealth design. We had a requirement for fencing, but no requirement to maintain it, and that's been added. We've added that all towers shall be constructed using monopole or stealth design. Before, it said that was the preferred design. We deleted the statement in the ordinance that says we could not use utility poles, telephone poles, or light poles. Obviously, the example I showed at the, with the ballpark, that would not be acceptable on our current ordinance. This is a standardization thing. The height that an antenna can be over a building, we changed from 25 feet to 20 feet is consistent with other ordinances. To be specific, we said lattice and guide towers shall be prohibited. Photos simulation, to help us as council people, to help residents understand what a tower would look like in a neighborhood, there's a requirement to have photos simulation to show what the tower would look like from neighboring residential areas in four directions. One of the people on our team indicated is in a similar industry, saying that's becoming standard practice. That's not a hardship to provide that. A small change, before it required a licensed professional engineer, we just added that they have to be licensed in the state of Missouri. We also added that earlier, landscaping, we can use, rather than following our landscaping ordinances, you can use natural landscaping that exists if the governing body so chooses. And that's it. I'll take any questions.
Councilman Shaver, I want to thank you for a job well done, you and members of the committee. This is certainly an in-depth study in it, is the best you could do, and impressive. So thank you.
And we have a handout. And there's other examples of towers and stealth designs within the handouts.
Any questions with Councilman Shaver? Other than job well done?
Thank you.
You're getting some thumbs up up here. Thank you, Councilman. Out of your own words, Councilman Shaver, I'm going to give you the opportunity to say that you will be making recommendations, bringing forth those changes for council approval at a future council meeting?
Yes, sir. I would assume in two weeks.
In the next couple of weeks.
That's your agenda.
Okay.
That was my comment, to ask that the ordinance be revised and addressed accordingly.
Okay, very good. Next, we have an appeal, the Blue Springs Transportation Center. Now, I want to make everybody understand that typically, we do not have public comments when we have an item like this. I made the exception this time, but I also put some rules in place, that those that are in support of the appeal collectively will have five minutes, and council members will be able to ask questions if they like. That's not included in the five minutes. And after that, then those that oppose the appeal will have five minutes. Now, I have some speakers' forms up here. I have two for those that support the appeal. You have two and a half minutes apiece when I call you. That's your five minutes. From the school district, I have four speaker appearance. I don't know if you want to huddle and figure out, so that only gives you a minute and a quarter apiece. And I've got the timer that I'm going to use up here and the gavel. I get to you when I get done. So those are the rules. Now, I'm not asking anybody to come up yet. First of all, the appeal staff, you want to, do you want to read that to say what it Mr. McDonald, you want to handle that? So people know what we're talking about.
It's an appeal of a site plan and design review, Paul, decision, and the appeal of a preliminary plat recommendation. Both of those are, well, ones are, both are something that normally are approved by the planning commission but are appealable to the city council. Both of them have been appealed. Both of them will be heard by the city council, and the city council will either approve the application as submitted with changes, or deny the application as to both issues. It'll be heard as if they were new matters, and the mayor has given you the time constraint.
Okay, they've been said, we know that we're appealing a decision made by the planning commission. Now, we will, this time, ask those people, and I have two forms here, that want to speak in support of the appeal. I have two speaker appearance forms, one from Terry Reed and one from David Handy. Terry Reed and David Handy. Those are the only two speaker forms I have to speak in support of. So I'm going to ask David Handy, is David here? Your date. Okay, I'm going to have you come up, and once you start to speak, the clock will be ticking.
In our conversations, you said we would go maybe eight minutes.
No, I said I would adjust it if I needed to, but I'm not adjusting it tonight. You've got two and a half minutes.
I guess, Your Honor, it would be nice for the city council...
I guess, Your Honor, it would be nice for the city council, if the people come up to speak, you know, tell us, you know, what their association with, do they have a house within there? Do they have business? Are they an attorney? It would be nice and helpful to us.
Mr. Handy, you want to tell us? You are a resident.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to bypass a whole lot because we don't have time. This is what the bus barn will look like. I wanted to see the magnitude and the scope of it. I'm not going to address what the zoning was, because we'll have to bypass that, but essentially, the zoning that they have gone with does not meet code in any way, shape, or form. I contacted the city of Lee Summit, also the city of Independence, who have both built bus barns, it was in the last couple of years, and they're kind of a precedence, and they had their zoning for Lee Summit out on 500 Transport Road on the way to the city dump, planned light industrial. Independence, out on Powell Road behind the Independence Power and Plant, is M1 Industrial, special use for dispatching center. Whoever recommended a parking lot either was heavily influenced by the school district or was incompetent, because either way, the zoning that they have put it under so far is not correct in any way, shape, or form. And it puts the city in a state of liability that Bob McDonnell could probably explain to you better than I could. That bullseye, my house is right there. The creek is right behind me. The city a number of years ago spent a small fortune having that creek straightened out and also removing the house and having it filled in because of flooding problems. Three weeks ago, the city crews came out, cleaned out underneath the road there, there, and all the way across, and two days later, it rained. It flooded. Under the proposed for the bus parking lot, they have a retention pond here that's awful small for approximately 17 acres of pavement going to it. And if it fails, we all get flooded. It's a definite concern. I called the city of Lake Tapawingo. I talked to the mayor of Rocky Queen, city clerk, and also Joe Rush of the Country Club Development. They are all more than happy to see the bus barn leave. And I asked them, well, what if you went on ahead and kept them there, rezoned? They'd all be fired.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reed, you got two and a half minutes.
Your Honor, I'd like to pass these out if I may.
Okay.
It is the PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Handy was a very good, he's an air force breaker. I never had to work this fast, though.
Well, you never worked under my command.
That's true. That is true. But he used to drop a lot off.
Clicker?
You know, gentlemen, I'm sorry.
No, no. We, we.
I think they know that codes might concern the providing more.
Okay, we'll let you pass those out, but your presentation's open standing. Well, we'll wait until he gets down with those. Once you just hand it here and I'll pass them down. Get the expedite time here.
We have the.
Clicker?
Dave, you have the clicker?
Are we ready?
Whenever you're ready.
That's our rendering of what we think it will look like with the vehicles on it, less landscaping, obviously. That's my building, which is directly behind the site. You have five or six appellants. We've all appealed on six different areas, all feeling that these were areas that should have been considered by planning and zoning prior to them issuing the green light on this project. The, my reference to all municipal codes have come right off of your own website. Commercial parking lot is for temporary basis, not permanent. As you can see, general business, I've highlighted there on the first one. That is the way we're trying to bring it in now. I've researched the regulations along with other people, and you see truck stop and vehicle storage, both which more fit what this project really is about. Needs to be zoned, a minimum of light industrial, and of course, that brings special use regulations into play. Special use is exactly what we're asking for. Special use regulations deal with noise, air pollution, water pollution, toxic gases. In a nutshell, you're asking us to stand there as business owners and homeowners and ignore the fact that there are 20,000 gallons of underground storage, fuel storage, 10,000 gallons of gasoline, 5,000 gallons of urea storage, a refueling facility, 18,000 square feet of maintenance facility. We're supposed to ignore that, none of that exists. It's just, it's just a parking lot according to the way it's been brought in. We're all intelligent people. You're the first people that we've had a chance to talk to, which I think is pathetic considering the impact this is going to have on the community at large, especially adjacent to Adams Dairy Parkway. Mr. Handy didn't get a chance to tell you what the traffic studies are, not traffic studies done that deal with the bus load. Those are things that we have, that we, as private citizens, have discovered. So sitting there in your files, in the engineering files of these gentlemen, are reports that quite frankly border on fraud, or at least do not have in them the proper information for you as elected officials to make your decision.
Okay, timekeeper told me your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, we will have members, I don't know if you've got your heads together, I have four speaker appearance forms. I don't know how many want to speak. Have you all decided that? Just two? Okay. Does everyone want to come up first? You can. Glenn.
Glenn McMillan with School District Director of Transportation.
John Brown with Hall Smith Miller Architects.
Okay. Let me have minutes apiece between you.
Okay. Mayor Ross, council members, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with me and John. As you may be aware, my name is Glenn McMillan. As I said, I've been director of transportation of Blue Springs Schools for 30 years. When I come to work each morning, I have one priority, and that's the safety and welfare of the students of Blue Springs. We have shown throughout this process a willingness to work with the city and the city planners to design the best transportation center possible. We have vet the vast majority of the recommendations, thus resulting in a unanimous vote of yes by the planning commission. Several issues continue to come up. One is pollution. Please be aware, we've been very proactive in this area, and to this day, we have probably the most efficient buses in this area, in that we retrofitted 48 of our buses to meet most current standards. Noise pollution, there are strict regulations pertaining to school buses that are set by the National Institute for Occupational Safety, and we meet those. In addition to that, we feel that the industrial park, the layout of the land, the landscaping that's required of us, the existing railroad berm, and the noise on 40 Highway and the railroad, that our buses will not add significantly to that. Congestion, there was a study done. There was a recommendation that a traffic light could be put in. The district decided to do that, and it is in the final phases of approval, as we know. Lastly, I'd like to point out that the noise congestion, pollution, and everything may not be as big a problem as stated in that on nights, weekends, holidays, and during the summer time, you will not have the buses running. The full buses only run 175 days out of 165 days.
With that, I'll turn it over to John.
Well, on behalf of the Blue Springs District, I want to thank you for tonight, and then we're asking the council to look at the planning commission's unanimous vote and approval of this project. We presented the information to staff. We had staff meetings. We answered their many questions. We answered questions of the planning commission. We also conducted a neighborhood meeting in which about 15 people attended. At that meeting, they had concerns of traffic noise and odor. Subsequent, looking at the appeals, letters of appeal, there was one on a traffic. And we have met with MoDOT, and this is a plan that's been submitted for signalization, and MoDOT has approved that preliminary, and they were in the design, submitting design drawings for final approval. Second one, I think, was light pollution, and basically, city standards, your planning commission, we have to meet the light cutoff value at our site around the perimeter. So we have met that, and we'll be meeting that when we submit for building permit. The fossil fuel odor pollution, as Glenn stated, the buses have EPA regulations that have to be followed, and they've been followed since 2006, and there's going to be more stringent regulations in 2010 which will be followed, as well as even the California Air Resource Board is verification on those. Zoning, it is a GB zone. We looked into this with the city and with staff, and Scott and James looked at that as well. We looked at rezoning, and after further investigation by their department, determined that this facility use fit under GB zoning. And so we did not pursue rezoning back to light industrial, because we felt we were in the proper zoning. And noise, as you talked about, the buses, there's also another thing with noise, most people with noise on diesel vehicles is diesel vehicles have to idle. That's where they sit and idle. The district's working on a component. We've actually put power poles outside in each of the lots, or actually every four. Basically, it's a coolant heaters. So they use those coolant heaters to install and to heat the refrigerants in the lines, so in the wintertime, the lines aren't frozen.
Will you not go make yours? Well, just do this, too. Okay, will you pass more time? Thank you. That's for five minutes? That's combined, and five minutes are up. Okay. Do you have any questions, Councilman?
Your Honor, I had two questions that had been brought up by Mr. Handy that I wanted staff to answer. The first one was regarding the detention basin and whether that's going to be adequate for this facility. And then the second question would be for our planning staff to address the zoning, whether it is appropriate to have general business or light industrial for this application.
Okay. Scott, who wants to answer that?
I'll throw it to the detention that meets AP.
It would meet the APWA criteria that we require.
So my question would be, this wouldn't add, under your expertise, you would say this would not add any additional runoff, because our standards are that whatever you bring in has to not add additional runoff to what was pre-existing.
Yeah, the post, the post-development and pre-development should be the same for the design storm, 50-year storm.
This meets those requirements?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Did that answer both of your questions?
No.
Okay, so Scott needs to answer the other one?
Sure, Your Honor, and Councilman Sullen, looking at the use types in the Unified Development Code, as well as the land use definitions, parking lot, commercial is the best fit for this type of use, based on the fact that there is no specific, you know, bus storage yard, bus terminal, bus parking lot, anything specific to this use, and therefore, finding a appropriate use type within our limited definitions, commercial parking lot was the best fit. Another, as Mr. Brown alluded to, and I believe Mr. Reed as well, vehicle equipment storage yard was another option that would require the light industrial designation. However, the vehicle equipment storage yard is intended to be used for long-term storage, meaning vehicles that do not leave the site on a long-term basis. A commercial parking lot is different, and is even specified in that vehicle equipment storage yard definition, as being, again, vehicles that are stored there on a temporary basis, meaning they come and go, in terms of their use on that site. And therefore, the commercial parking lot was the best use. Again, admittedly not perhaps the best fit, based on perhaps maybe what Lee Summit has under their definitions of use types. I'm not sure what they have, but there are certainly more specific use types that I'm sure are out there, but with our Unified Development Code, existing use types, that was the best fit.
Good. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Let me ask you a question, then we're going to, Councilman Shaver, is not GB more restrictive than light industrial?
No.
As far as landscape and the things, some of the things we've talked about?
In terms of landscaping, I'd have to look at the code to see if that's indeed the case. That's generally the case, because working in the non-residential zoning districts, high industrial being the most permissive, and then working up to neighborhood business being the most restrictive. And so general business generally is a little bit more restrictive in terms of what you're referring to landscaping and such. But again, it's, it is a permitted use under general business. In light industrial, if it were to fall under, again, vehicle equipment storage yard, which only would fit if it were long-term storage, it would be a conditional use, and therefore, there would be some opportunity for additional standards that could be placed on that at the planning commission's purview.
Okay. Councilman Shaver?
Yes, Your Honor. Could Mr. DeGrae address the issue raised regarding, I guess, adequacy of a traffic study? Seems to me it was questioned that we, that there was an adequate traffic study?
The reason I'm hesitating, Councilman, is the city engineer hasn't brought anything to my attention about any deficiencies in the traffic study. Usually, if everything's fine, he won't bring it to my attention. If there are deficiencies or problems, then he'll give me a heads-up before we go into council. So truthfully, when we discussed the project, the traffic study wasn't brought into question. So if you want me to delve into it deeper, I can report back to you later, but this time, I wouldn't have anything to say that it was inadequate or wasn't done following normal procedure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman Lowry?
Yes, Mayor. And follow-up to that, Mr. DeGrae, this is a state highway, and so MoDOT or Missouri Department of Transportation had to have been involved in this, and that's where the traffic signalization and so forth, that's all being worked through that group?
Yes, that is correct.
As well as with the city?
It's MoDOT right away, that's correct. So they would have the final say on it.
Okay. And then also a question in regards to one of the issues that were brought up regarding storage of the fuel. Whoever would be best prepared to respond to that, the diesel and underground storage that was brought up by the citizen?
Maybe we can ask the school district, maybe Mr. McMillan can answer that?
Basically, what I would say is that would probably be one of the most checked things we do, because not only do we have to meet all the standards of the city, but we have to meet all the state standards also. And one of the most checked things on my facility right now is the gas facility. It is checked regularly. People come out and take the readings, et cetera, and we'll have the latest safety equipment installed from the get-go.
Isn't it?
That's not negotiable. That's something that has to be done.
And isn't it the Department of Agriculture, State Department of Agriculture that comes out and does that?
I, Department of Natural Resources. EPA will be involved with it.
The state would probably want a Department of Agriculture to be one to come out and check those weights and do stuff properly.
So based on what you're, in your response to that, then I'm assuming that the appropriate regulatory agencies, whether it be EPA or State Department of Agriculture, whatever, would all need to be involved in this?
They all will have to approve it down the last letter, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, council members, I get everybody's questions answered. Now, I'm going to entertain a motion to either affirm or reject the planning commission's decision.
Your May, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal and stick with our.
Confirm the planning commission's decision.
Yes, confirm the planning commission's.
Okay, there is a motion to deny the appeal and affirm the planning commission's decision. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Okay, is there discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Is that as to both the preliminary plat and the site plan and design review, or just one of them?
Both of them.
Okay, both. Everybody understand, it is to affirm the planning commission's decision on both. Everybody understand, clear? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Discussion.
Your Honor, I just, just to be on the up and up, I just want to disclose that I have sat in on, I think, well, viewing the planning commission on television, I have viewed this, I think, five total times. I was there for the homeowners' meeting. I also attended a meeting at Mr. Reed's business. So I, and at the school district, a presentation there. I just want to be on the up and up on that. And I would say that these plans have evolved from that first viewing that I had way back when to the present, that was presented at the planning. when to the present, that was presented at the planning commission. There has been a lot of changes made on it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I guess I would also say, I was involved with a meeting with representatives of the school. And I'd also comment today, I took the opportunity to drive around at their current facility and looking at it to compare that to the new location. And it seems to me that there is residents probably closer to the current location than the new location. And I talked to one resident that I happened to know who was a bit of ways away, but has lived there for many years, the Lake Tapawingo, and I asked him, has there ever been any issue with the bus barn? And the answer was no.
Any other comments? You've heard the motion, we've got a second, we've had discussion. All in favor, say aye. Those no? Motion carries. That brings us down to mayoral announcements. One of the things that I will announce is this Friday, we will have the first of the year on street flicks. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that due to another commitment and Councilman Solon will fill in as Mayor Pro Tem to kick in the new year with street flicks. And I know Councilman Edmondson is normally there working very hard and other councilmen, Lowry and a number of them have been there to attend it. And we wish you well in my absence. Those are only mayoral announcements I have. Next, we will come to the visitors section. Now, the visitors section, I have a couple of forms. Donna, would you like to come up?
Thank you. My name is Donna Strosky. And before I talk about fireworks tonight, I was going to ask, do you ever, have you ever like thought about the people who are like shut-ins or they're tornadoed in or snowed in or something and they can't make it here, that someone that has their, maybe, you know, their PDA with them or an email, they can just email in a question or something and you can like answer it during this? Ever thought about that or? Yeah, okay. Well, I'm here very, very briefly tonight. I've passed, I've passed this out. Todd, where are you going to build it? And I'm just, you know, concerned, again, this year for the four days and the long time during the four days that the fireworks are allowed to be shot off. And as we see here, you know, we have children that are sleeping in the daytime, we have, you know, returning vets, we have daytime sleepers. You know, I live with one and she worked the midnight shift and got off and about 10 o'clock was when she went to bed, so it was hard for her to sleep. All the animals, the horses, the birds are gone, you know, the older people, the firemen are busier, the police are busier, the squirrels, the dogs, children, older people shut in. And they hear all these things. And I was wondering, is there any way we can go back together to the committee, you know, that we had or get another committee and look over the hours? 1989, the hours were from 8:00 a.m. till midnight, all four days. So when I saw that today, I was like, whoa, maybe I should be quiet. And then in 2005, they went from that time to 10:00 a.m., to 11:00 p.m., the first, second and third, and then on the fourth, the 10:00 a.m. till midnight. And so, again, these are just my concerns. I'm not opposed to fireworks. I just don't know why it's a holiday that lasts for four days. And if you look up here, I'm sure something up here touches your heart. You know, you have somebody, something up there touches you. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Donna.
I just like to say thank you, Dawn, and I know that you know where I come from, ONS, and I don't know if there's anybody any more patriotic than I am, but there isn't anybody that probably enjoys the four days of the really loud stuff. I would like to personally, and I've mentioned this before, see it limited to the fourth. All of our other holidays, we celebrate on that day and most of our others don't, well, I can't think of another holiday that pertains to that much noise and smoke and all that.
I am concerned, we're not going to have the fireworks this year at the Blue Springs High School due to economics, well, I think economics and construction. Okay, I didn't know if it was both. So, you know, I'm concerned, you know, for police chief, you know, are we going to be, are they going to be busier out there because more people are going to get them and, you know, have them like, you know, shooting off? It just seems like maybe in 18, 1989, maybe in 1989, you know, maybe people's homes were like maybe like an acre part now, we're all like crunched up and there was like, I don't know, I got here then, I think there were like 20,000 people and now there's like 50-some thousand. And it's just a lot of people to think about. You know, you're not just kind of talking anymore about just kind of everybody that you know, you're talking about people you don't know. So, but I, I like it either, you know, I'm sorry, Sissy.
Well, the other comment I wanted to make is I think, just like technology and everything else, it's progressed, so is fireworks.
Right.
You know, when I was a kid, you had, what they call them, baby fingers, little fingers where, and now they have gigantic ones and they're all, you know, that are legal.
And we've already had M80s go off. You know, I emailed my reps two Saturdays ago and, you know, Police Chief McCoy knows that they've gone off and, you know, I mean, when I call in, I mess up with a gunner and M80 and I'm not talented enough to know the difference, but it's awfully noisy, you know, and it's, so, again, thank you. I'm really just here, can we get back to the thing? Can we get back, maybe get another group going and kind of like, you know, look at it again and evaluate the people who love the fireworks, like get them on it and maybe people like us and see if we can, you know, maybe look at this again. I just don't know where these four days came from. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Donna. Best of rolls to you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate the smaller definition of time here from noon to 11:00 on Friday the 3rd and Saturday the 4th. And to also comment that last year, we had the Be a Good Neighbor program during the Fourth of July holiday with the fireworks. And we saw great success with that and Chief McCoy, we applaud you for your work in that as well as Meredith and the communications from the city. And I understand that is in place again this year. The community will be seeing the flyers and information come out as to what the rules are and the regulations and so forth, so that can be monitored within neighborhoods and so forth. And I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief McCoy, but I believe you saw a decrease in incidents that occurred. If you could maybe share that with the public as well?
Yes, we did see a little bit of a decrease and we believe that the educational process was a real good part of that. Our citizens are relatively responsible when they work and, as you know, we also have special patrols who simply respond to fireworks calls and try to assist in any way they can in that, during that period.
Okay. Thank you. And I think, you know, our overall is we want to be able to celebrate our independence and at the same time, we want to make it a safe one and one that people can enjoy.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Your Honor, I just wanted to add, I love the fireworks at PV every year, so I'm disappointed that we're not going to have fireworks and it's not economics, it's because both high schools are under construction because of their recent bond issue. So fireworks will be back next year and I'll be one of the people that'll have to go out of town to watch them. So I look forward to them coming back next year.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have Sheridan Doll. Would you like to come up and you want to talk about fireworks?
I just want to say I'm new at this and so I didn't know how it worked, so I just wrote up a statement if I could read it.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
We rescue Bichon's Frisees, the little white fluffy dogs. They come from puppy mills and when we get them, they are afraid of everything, especially loud noises. We have to rehabilitate them, to learn to trust humans, take food from our hands and teach them that they are safe. When we feel they are ready, they are put up for adoption. While they are in a puppy mill, they can hear dogs being shot and this is very traumatic for them. It takes a long time for us to get them used to going outside and being able to run around and play and learn to potty outside. These fireworks set them back to the point that they refuse to go outside for several weeks. It's no fun to have to clean up after they do their business in the house. Then we have to start all over again to teach them that it's okay to go outside to play. For many years, we have spoken up about the illegal use of fireworks. We are constantly being told to call the police to report this abuse. Unfortunately, we can't provide an address because the noise is far enough to hear, but not close enough to give an address. However, the illegal stuff that's going off is powerful enough to sound like a sonic boom and shake our house. The people doing this don't want to be identified, so they just shoot off one at a time. Their neighbors are probably afraid to report them for fear of retaliation. When we came here into Blue Springs in 1978, there were only 16,000 residents. I don't know when the fireworks rules were initiated, but back then, there obviously were fewer residents and they probably lived on much larger lots. Now with over 50,000 residents and so many more housing developments with houses so close together, the time has come for the rules to change. Why do we need four days? In 2007, fireworks were still being shot off on July 18th. In 2008, it started on May 21st. And this year, 2009, it started on May 22nd already. Yesterday afternoon, someone was shooting off what sounded like M80s. I shouldered to think that people have so many fireworks stored in their homes that this is a real danger to the rest of us. Why do we need a midnight deadline? There are people who need to get up for work and school the next day and young children that need to get to sleep. For several years, we have suggested that residents use some of our parks to shoot off with a fire engine and ambulance standing by. Then the mess can be cleaned up in one spot and only legal fireworks would be used. Selling fireworks only benefits a handful of organizations and ironically, one organization selling fireworks helps burn victims. We understand illegal fireworks are not being sold in the city by these organizations. However, people are buying the illegal stuff in other cities and shooting them off here and don't even comply with the current timeframes allotted. It is obvious the current deterrent of a minimal fine is not working. Therefore, there needs to be an increase in the current fine that would send a clear message to those failing to comply with the rules. In closing, we are speaking up not just for our rescue dogs, we are speaking up for all the animals in this city who are frightened enough to jump fences and end up running away or getting killed by cars. We are also speaking up for those people who have to clean up after their animals when they refuse to go outside to relieve themselves. We feel it is time the city starts listening to its citizens and it is absolutely necessary to rethink the use of fireworks in Blue Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and sharing it with us. Next, we have Christine Williams, the Blue Springs Farmer's Market.
May I pass this out?
Yeah, just handed someone and now pass it out.
Thank you for letting me come up and speak tonight. Probably most of you guys know that there is a farmer's market right across the street and we are here tonight just to make aware of some of the neat things that are going on this year and we're expanding the market. First of all, I do want to let you know that all of our market, the vendors there are local farmers, which means this county and the surrounding counties around us. And it's a growers-only market, so that means that they can't go out and buy something from another state and sell it at our market. It is totally supporting Missouri and our local area. On this agenda, I've got several different things on here. It's a good way to buy fresh food or organic or conventionally grown food. Again, support our local and state farmers. We have some of the vendors that are WIC-approved. We have CSA farmers. We've got vendors that do baked goods, fresh flowers, bedding plants and garden art also. And some of the new things that we're doing this year is inviting our customers to come into classes to learn about gardening or, for adult classes, gardening and cooking. And then we have children's classes also going on with gardening, cooking and art classes. And these are all free to the public. We are in the process of trying to find grants to help the farmer's market grow. And we are also going to be looking at getting an EBT and food stamp machine and credit card machines. And what we're needing is some help and support from the council and anybody else that's on the audience. And first of all, by coming out and being one of our customers, and each one of you has got a coupon to come out and get some free merchandise. Okay? And then secondly, financial support by, we're going to be doing some advertising and we're needing help in that area. And third, volunteers to reach out to the community and teach gardening classes and some cooking classes. And this is an opportunity for the people in Blue Springs to learn some gardening and be able to take care of theirselves and have fresh garden products of their own. And just a great way for all of us to have a healthy lifestyle to live. Thank you.
Well, before you leave, Ms. Williams, are you working with the MUU extension, which is House right next?
We, I am working with them. I've talked to them a couple of times, but I've not made it up to directly talk to them. They said that they're going to probably come out and help with some of the classes.
Okay, and you want to tell us the hours, the day, the hours, so everybody can know that?
Yes. Saturday mornings is from 7:00 to 12:00. And we have been doing it on Tuesday mornings, but I believe we're going to be changing in two weeks to Tuesday afternoon from about 3:30 to 6:30. But we will be getting that information out as soon as we make that decision, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lowry?
Thank you for supporting that and having that in our community. It's our frequent shopper and having grown up on the farm, there's just nothing that tastes as good as homegrown food. And I know it's really important now with the economy and folks are really trying to see what they can do and certainly with health. And so I appreciate your efforts in helping to promote this and get that going.
Thank you.
I'll help you out as much as I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Schaefer?
I'm curious, I have not been down and I admit I should have. I also grew up on a farm and there's nothing like fresh corn, for sure. How are you organized and how many vendors do you typically have?
We have, we're growing in our vendors, okay? I actually just started working at the market this season. When I came in, we had 15 vendors and they're not all at market yet because some of their products won't come in for another couple of weeks still. But we've consistently had about seven vendors right now for this last month. And it's set up just, we've got a president, which is here tonight, his name's Jim, and one of our vendors are here too. But we have a treasurer and so everything's kept balanced that way. This is the first year that they've had a market manager. And so it's just a new step that we're going towards and trying to really expand it.
Thank you.
I'll take you down Saturday morning.
Thank you. Will you cook?
Sure. Come out this Saturday and we have a cook there.
Oh, do you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. To see you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm curious, you know, how many of us sitting here either grew up on a farm or worked a farm as youngsters? Raise your hand, let's see. Okay, we'll take, teach you city slick.
Your Honor, if I may, I invite you or a representative of you to come out for a movie night. We usually have a pretty good crowd that comes out in the evening that's fairly diverse from around the community, maybe hand out a flyer or something along that line. And if you'd like to see me, I'd be glad to help you make up that flyer for that. So check with me afterwards.
I'll add one other note that since Councilman Solon will be thanking the downtown merchants in my absence Friday nights, you would probably mention something like that.
Your Honor?
Yes?
The other thing I would suggest, having been to the, like Music in the Park this past Sunday, we had a huge crowd there. That might be an opportunity to hand out flyers.
So you came to a council member just didn't, had no idea you were going to get these many suggestions. All right. Any other comments from the council? CNN, I entertain a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, aye? Those no? We adjourn.